Commissioner Hooks will leave you some prayer. Please pay his standing for the pledge to our nation's flag.
Lord, Father, as we come to you, Lord, we pray. Great thanks, Lord, that you have us and you have Super Jack all along the process. Lord, and we're thankful that you're with us, Lord, as high as we is rejoicing in a new body. One, it's not stripping with cancer. Lord, but we pray for long and day. Lord, our hearts are broken. Father God, and they send them to this earth, Lord, and we pray. God, if you just fill that void. Father, and help us to help them. Father God, to put back all the angel where they need to be. Help them, Father, with whatever they need help with. Father, we pray for this meeting to see then. Lord, and we pray that we come together, we sit together, Father, and conduct our business in a way that you be pleased with. We'll be united in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic which is one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you. You may be seated. Please bow at yourself.
Just, thank you for just small. I think, as he said in his prayer. I think Super Jack has left a legacy for this little county. There was a thing in Rockwood the other night, you know? And I've never seen so many people from all over this county come together. So, I, I think, I think Super Jack will be remembered for a long, long time. Sheriff, his legacy is one that we should all be proud of. Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you.
Mr. Hook.
I was going to echo basically the same thoughts, but if we can take it a moment further and dedicate just a moment of silence to Super Jack and the family, we can do that.
Send it.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
All right, not logged in as a viewer, go ahead and feel free to log in. Ron, I'm telling you connected, but not present. All right, thank you. Need a motion to approve the minutes of the July eighth, twenty twenty four meeting?
Motion.
Mayor Second.
Dana, we've got a public hearing we need to acknowledge.
Okay. For the zoning?
Yes.
And I guess if it's not in my format, then I move right on. So, let me go to zoning resolution zero eight twenty four oh one Zulu. So, at this time, we'll open up a public hearing. This is a resolution of Rome County Planning Commission recommending action by the County Legislative Commission on a resolution amendment of Rome County zoning. First off, we'll open up the podium for any comments from the public. All right, hearing none, seeing none. Mr. Cooper, you want to tell us about?
This is a piece of property that you're going out here and going up towards Waterford on the right or left inside on the road there. It is an agricultural area, airplane grounded, say two.
It's near the ground where Brown, she said, they're providing.
Exactly. And so, this is a good move to move it back to A two instead of D two.
And the landowner agreed that he's going to solicit that.
They're replacing.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? Any other comment? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk.
That's proper. If you want to go ahead and take up the resolution now, you can do that.
For the zoning?
The zoning, is that what you were wanting?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can go right into the resolution.
So, and I remember one, two years ago or last year, when we combined the meetings, that was my intent, combining meetings so that we wouldn't have a pause or a stop in action. Just continue to.
Yeah, and you can go ahead and take the motion on a second and then debate the resolution if you want to.
So, did I, I don't get some Greg Ferguson motion and Big Dan second?
For the manhole. Let me get that resolution pulled up.
Okay.
Okay, that resolution's on the board.
Motion by Henderson, second by Goss. Commissioner Henderson.
Madam Burke.
Commissioner Goss.
Madam Burke, sir.
All right, Madam Clerk. All right, motion carries fifteen oh. All right, there's no other zoning or any other things coming from the commission in public hearing format. But this time, we'll move right into our regular scheduled commission meeting. So, and for those that don't know, we used to have to wait thirty minutes after that because we scheduled thirty minutes before. So, to be more efficient, we just scheduled it all at one time. All right, so I've already announced this, and thank you, Madam Clerk, for keeping me in check there. So, this motion was for the approval of the minutes. So, we've got Commissioner Ferguson and Commissioner Dan. Commissioner Ferguson. Commissioner Dan.
Not the clerk, sir.
Any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. All right, acceptance of committee reports and correspondence. Motion by Dove, the second by Ron Burton. Commissioner Dove.
Nothing.
Commissioner Burke.
Yes, sir. Report number, report number one, I'm just curious, Mr. President, if, you know, last month, we talked about the need for a new plant? They said you can get a couple.
No, no information's been provided on the need for new plant yet. We skipped this case.
And number nineteen was sharing a report from the county clerk. I don't know that we've seen these before.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
I mean, every year.
I mean, I mean, rather. I mean, I do it once a year. Okay, and, and I guess my question is that, for instance, we've got one point eight million of receipts, one point seven in disbursements. So, ninety-two in commissions, is that commissions that your office keeps? Is that commissions that the trustee gets? I didn't know because everything goes through, it gets a commission on. I wasn't sure if that, that was commissions that your office generates or if that was, if that was his, his commission.
That's what's turned out to be.
Yeah, that's what's turned out to be the trustee. Then, Mr. Chairman, on number seventeen, this one comes from the trustee. And, and as I was talking to the trustee, Dan, this is, this is just money that he had. Even, even though you've got, it's showing a lot here. It's sometimes allocated three or four different ways. But I think what was important is that we had twenty-nine point five million dollars of beginning balance of interest investments last year. This year, we get thirty-eight point nine. Think, think, that same point, that shows where our growth and, and our investment money. We're five, five point four percent. So, we've done, done a great job. If that's all I have.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. All right, next up is notaries. We have a list of notaries that'll be displayed for you on screen. I'll take a motion and a second.
Chairman, you've got a motion with Henderson and second with Dan.
All right, Commissioner Henderson.
Madam Burke, appreciate your willingness, sir.
Commissioner Dan. All right, any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. All right, motion carries fifteen. All right, next up is hearing of delegation. So, if you want to address the county commissions, please step to the podium at this time. Tell us your name and tell us where you're from. I would ask you to keep it to three minutes.
Cliff Steger from Rockwood. Mankind has had a long tradition of naming locations of significant, significant locations of significance after individuals who have contributed much to society. Rome County, in eighteen oh one, named Rome as Bald Ratt. Bald Rome was the second governor, starting eighteen oh one to eighteen oh three. He became judge of Tennessee Supreme Court of Appeals. Seal up there, the great seal of Tennessee was adopted during his term as governor. Tonight, you have a resolution before you to honor another individual who has contributed much to our local Rome County community. Bill Farnum has served our community almost his entire life. He was not always someone that was the point man in the news. He was usually working tirelessly behind the scenes and trying to keep our community safe. Bill has acted for the safety of our community, having served as law enforcement and civil defense. We no longer have those little triangles on our AM radios for contact checks. And the team of civil defense has worked into emergency management. In any emergency situation, Bill was always active. He led a volunteer group that assisted the emergency management with additional communication personnel and advocated for their training to be as useful as possible. Bill would be humbled and honored to be bestowed by.
Thank you so much, Mr. Wilson. All right, be hard to top that, but anybody else want to address the county commission? Anyone else? Brooke, is that yours? All right. Seeing none, hearing none, we'll move on to the county appearance report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got two matters on the HME pumper truck negotiations. We are still negotiating and we have recently asked for some information to help us determine where to go with it. And they have indicated they'll provide that to us sometime within the next few days. So, they haven't stalled. They're just not, they just have to progress. But both sides are communicating. Secondly, since we last met, our registered deeds has filed a salary suit. We have responded. We have sent them out interrogatories to answer. They have sent us interrogatories to answer. And by statute, before we can actually take the case to court, we're required to go through mediation. That is scheduled for September. I will keep you posted on progress.
And just to help the novice myself, the mediation, is that between mediator, like a state mediator that would facilitate that?
No, we had to hire a mediator, so we have agreed on mediator and hired a mediator to facilitate.
And then it can go to court?
Then, if the mediations are not successful or if the court does not approve the tentative agreement at mediation, if there is an agreement, then it would go on to trial.
And more, who would, what judge would host that trial?
It's in Chancery Court.
Okay, good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. That's all I have to report tonight. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chairman, and that's just, that's just the chancellor makes the ruling.
The chancellor makes the ruling and then either side can appeal if they're agreeing.
So, so is there, is there a money amount of suit?
Um, I'll know more of what they're wanting when we get into mediation. So, when we get our any long. It's just for seconds.
Anything farther? Any other questions for the county? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up is county executive report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd ask that all of you, please refer to the new Rome County rundown on your desk. This report has been redesigned to include all of the key performance indicators for each department. This is what I ask each department to measure in their strategic plans. So, we have created ways to visualize each of these measurements for you. And this will continue to evolve as we try to get it to where it's useful for you. The point of this report is to give you the useful information so that you're comfortable with our current status. At least you have a, a comfortable basis of knowledge on where we stand in all of our departments. So, this run's report is a little bit lengthy because it includes all the year end information for FY twenty-four. So, also too, I'd like Jennifer Hasbrook to walk you through just that first page to show you how it flows down last year. Jennifer, you cover those KBS first page.
If you will look, we compared fiscal year twenty twenty-three to fiscal year twenty twenty-four, and we've stayed pretty consistent. And twenty twenty-three, we had fifteen percent fallout. And this is budget compared to expenditures. So, we're taking, we're showing you the budget for twenty twenty-three and the actual expenditures for twenty twenty-three, as well as the budget for twenty twenty-four and where we have spent ending twenty twenty-four. We plan to spend, to use, sorry, we plan to close the books for June, Friday, hopefully Friday. So, we'll have accurate, more accurate numbers. But this is pretty close to where we plan to end up twenty twenty-four. And so, as we go along throughout the each month, we'll add to, you know, where we are in July, where we are, you know, I guess that you compared to last year. Just so you guys can kind of see if we're staying consistent or if there's something that needs to be addressed.
Thank you. So, a couple of things I want to, we've worked hard to try to get the right simple case and, and information here to present it. And they're really presenting, it's the same information presented in two different ways. So, if you look year to year, it shows two things. One, that we're, we're working to make sure that we're living within our means. And two, that we're guided by our fund balance policy. So, you see there for, I mean, last year, we were fifteen percent. This past year, we're at twelve percent. Y'all remember that we projected a thirteen percent fallout for FY twenty-five. We get out directives to all our departments to be extremely prouable this year as directed by you all in our last budget discussion. But, and I'm not going to carry through all of, all these pages. These are for you. But ask any questions you can. Again, we'll have some more standardized formatting in this report. But you're the first person, you're the first group to see this. Everybody else, the distribution list, will receive this tomorrow morning at eight. And that's when we are, are scheduled moving forward. That this meeting is the target day to have our reports ready for you because you're the target audience for it. Does that make sense? Any questions on the rundown before we move forward?
So, on the one oh one budget, twenty-four, we're going to talk left water.
Yeah.
It shows the fallout of three million, three hundred fifty-six thousand, seven hundred two dollars.
Right.
All right, is that reflected in the nine million, nine hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars in fund balance?
Where are you seeing that figure?
I'm seeing it on the chart on the resolution. But no, I see it on another one, on a resolution that we're processing, not. It shows the fund balance, unassigned funding.
Yes, it is reflected.
So, the nine million, five hundred eighty-nine thousand, six hundred fourteen dollars, that three million is.
Yes, it, yes, that is, that is what has fallen out of the expenditures. So, that will fall, that is falling to fund balance at the twenty-four, which carries out our into twenty-five.
And that's unassigned throughout the rest, throughout the year, that's unassigned funding?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Burke.
So, so, who's chairman? I guess our fallout seems to be increasing at some point. We need to.
So, it's all about the fund balance policy. We try to plan our expenditures relative to our revenue to make sure our fund balance ends up being compliant. We're shooting for forty-five percent. Do you remember Caleb Walker talking about, if you get too high, you look into arbitrage situation that say, that control of the balance.
Well, I wonder if forty, forty-five percent would be way too high.
The, the compliance is thirty-five, forty-five percent fund balance. Well, you're talking about two different things. This twelve percent, fifteen percent fallout, what, basically what we didn't spend that then becomes fund balance. We're guided by our fund balance policy. And we're, we're shooting for forty-five percent fund balance for that particular year. So, we're trying to create a fallout percentage that helps us be compliant with the fund balance policy. That's the guiding line. That make it, that clears mud? Jennifer, is that, say that, Andrew?
Yeah, but it just, it just seemed, and I think that, that was, that was one of the things that we had budgeted on. If we get so much fund balance fallout, then, then we need to re-establish.
Yes, new numbers. That is, that is true. You're, you're thinking, it's too much fallout, then we're taxing our people.
Well, not necessarily taxing them, but we, we, we have more money to slide.
Yes, but our guiding line is whatever that fund balance is, whatever that fund balance percentage is, we're shooting for forty-five percent.
But that can be changed at any time, right?
Not the fund balance.
No, no, the, the percent of fallout, that we did twelve percent or forty-five.
It can be changed by what we are not spending. Yeah. Right. Let me move on. Couple more points, Mr. Chairman, in case, unless anybody else has a question about the rundown. And, and if you have comments or suggestions about how to make this more useful for you, that's what this is for. This is your tool.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, yes, I, I just like to make it in a kind of voice. Just because the fallout is a certain amount this year, it's an increase. That's the means going to be the same fallout for the next year. There's a lot of factors weighing into this factor. Fallout is, for example, the turf department, it could be high increase in metal. So, you just to see then that gas is already at eighty-six dollars a barrel and going on there. So, that would affect the budget for this year. Because it wasn't funny. You know, year to year, it's, it's like a throw cup, if you would. It, it's never the same. So, as long as the budget doesn't grow a lot in amount and volume, it's just, it changes every year. And that was my comment. I just thought it became basic year to year. And that's my kind of boy remark.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, couple more points. Yeah, seeing it.
I'm absolutely thrilled to announce that Rome County EMS chief April Miller and Captain Justin Pierce were recently featured on the Tennessee State-sponsored Leadership Mentorship Call and Podcast on August second. During this interview, they shared insights, experiences on how Rome County EMS has driven our department's success with EMS leaders across the state. Their innovative strategies and dedication to exceptional patient care have garnered statewide recognition. And now, our EMS department will be gaining nationwide recognition and will be exclusively showcased in the State of Tennessee's EMS Leadership Course Presentation at the World EMS Expo in Las Vegas, Nevada. In, in twenty twenty-three, just to give you some reference, the World EMS Expo attracted over six thousand attendees from fifty different countries worldwide. This accomplishment will not only highlight the success of Rome County EMS, but also underscore the exceptional leadership Rome County has shown throughout this region and state. So, I'm so proud of our team's achievements and I want to express our gratitude for their hard work and dedication. So, will you please join me in congratulating Director Tim Suter, Assistant Director Chief April Miller, and Captain Justin Pierce for their outstanding efforts to make. Also, Mr. Chairman, next Monday, April, August nineteenth at five P M., I invite all of you to join us at the Emergency Operations Center for renaming of the center to the Bill, Bill Farnum Emergency Operations Center. As you all know, in June, the property committee voted to rename the center after Bill passed away in April. So, we ask you to join us for a ceremony in his honor on August nineteenth. Also, we are hosting a swearing in ceremony on August twenty-third, ten A M. In the circuit courtroom for officials who were elected or re-elected and want to congratulate Commissioner Nancy Hamilton, her, her election. And then finally, the Health Department project remains on time and on track for the October twenty-eighth completion date. That includes a new document storage center adjacent to the Health Department. On Friday, we hired a new records manager who will begin in the next few weeks developing a plan to move current records into the new facility. So, much more to come as we get closer to the grand opening date. That concludes my report. If I can take any questions.
Mr. Burke, we need to get whatever we have to County News for NACO so that that can be, that can be part of the.
On the EMS?
County News.
Absolutely.
EMS stuff as well. So, we need to get, we don't get an opportunity very often. Need to take advantage of the one we can. Thank you.
Mr. Burke?
Where are we at on the Senate inspector, down low?
The show, it's like, I think, said, it's for. It improves the state on me with two other jurisdictions and if they're right on what they did, so we're getting there.
I'm, I'm hearing that maybe our guy was for Rome County, maybe it moved to a different job, you know, state department. There's going to be some calls.
Yeah, there's, there's quite a few of them, like in the second.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, moving on, special orders, is there any? Okay. We already covered the zoning, and I will look that in the format where I tend to the front when we have those. So, going on to new business, we do have thirteen items, however, two, some of the resolutions have been pulled. So, just be advised that I'll go, I'll go through them here. First up is resolution zero eight twenty-four zero one, a resolution for the abandonment of all interest of Rome County, if any, in a zero point two six acre portion right away on Lakewood Drive and Ten. Motion by Commissioner Parks and Commissioner Henderson, Commissioner Parks.
I don't have anything.
Mr. Henderson.
Madam Burke.
Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Motion carries fifteen. Resolution zero eight twenty-four oh two, resolution requesting the Tennessee Department of Transportation to consider adding plan for a connection from Interstate forty exit three forty, Highway two ninety-nine south to Rockwood. Motion by Barry and second by Kirby, Commissioner Burke.
Yes, so this, this is a resolution that Rockwood City Council passed, and they just wanted us to, to pass one as well in support of this is a, this is a rug coming down from Airport Road. And it's, you know, we've got the existing airport road. We've got one lane now. And, uh, it's, uh, you know, we've got the, the existing airport road, we've got one lane now. This isn't something probably that we want to go out and buy, buy a lane on. They told us before, it would never happen, so. They're trying to begin with the new commissioner, but this is just support Rockwood City Council on their resolution for this.
All right, Commissioner Kirby. All right, any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Motion carries fifteen. Resolution zero eight twenty-four oh three, resolution to approve the naming of the Rome County Emergency Operations Center in honor in memory of John William Bill Farnum. Motion by Commissioner Wilson, second by Commissioner Henderson, Commissioner Wilson.
Uh, nothing, man, I think we, uh, I think we've stayed well enough.
Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Nothing, I agree, Mr. Wilson.
All right, any discussion, Commissioner Burd.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we, we need to make a, make the amendment, uh, in the resolution, uh, serving as the director of civil defense. Is there an authority to the emergency medical service division, but need, need to include, include civil defense as the, as the. Civil defense instead, instead of emergency management.
Except as friendly.
Instead of emergency management, substitute civil defense for emergency management is the friendly.
And, and I don't think, I don't think we can ever, uh, do enough to, to say thanks, uh, cause. Man, you, you, you gave up your husband and now you're doing, doing our stuff. So when he was, he was a community case, it's great. Oh, yes. You can, you can see the excitement brought to him. And, uh, I, I just, I just think this is a small, small thing. Our appreciation for what he's meant to the scale. We, we need to build, build. Thank you. Your participation in your, as I said earlier, you're behind us as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussion? Well, first off, was you the author of the resolution or?
Uh, most.
You were, so you accepted your own amendment as a friendly amendment, we don't need a second. Thank you. Or do I need a second? I don't think so.
I'll say. Well, technically, you need a motion to amend a second, then you vote on that.
All right, I have a motion from the author and a second by Commissioner Henderson, all those in favor, voice vote, say aye. All those opposed, black sign. All right, any other discussion on, uh, Resolution eight twenty-four oh three as amended friendly? All right, hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. All right, motion carries fifteen. Resolution zero eight twenty-four oh four, resolution amend, uh, to amend revenue and expenditure for twenty twenty-three community development block grant that has been, been awarded. Motion by. Motion by Commissioner Hucks, second by Travis Park, Commissioner Hucks.
I'm here with our county executive. This is, uh, required for us to accept the grant and, uh, should have been done about six months.
Commissioner Parks.
No, no, no.
Any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Motion carries fifteen. Resolution eight twenty-four oh five, resolution amending the revenue and expenditures in general fund one oh one to account for the community development block grant, uh, C D V G dash C V, addressing food insecurity grant that was awarded. Motion by, uh, Commissioner Wilson, second by Commissioner Doug, Commissioner Wilson.
This has also been through the budget meeting, it's similar to the previous. Catching up, so.
All right, Commissioner Doug.
Nothing further.
Any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Motion carries fifteen. Resolution appropriated state aid funding and highway fund for F Y twenty twenty-five. Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Doug, Commissioner Henderson.
Nothing, brother.
Commissioner Doug.
Nothing.
Any discussion, any debate?
Stay.
Attended, who said it? Commissioner Burd.
I think this was, this was where we had the money left over from the, the state aid road. Yeah, and, and their, their reimmersion is this month. Does it go back into the state aid fund or does this go, this go into the record?
Well, this is, well, what happened in last year, they had three million in state aid fund. This is carryover from last.
What was unspent.
What was unspent.
So, so we still have to use this on the state aid road.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. All right, motion carries fifteen. Resolution eight twenty-four oh seven has been, uh, pulled. So we'll see that next month. Resolution eight twenty-four zero, the increased decrease appropriations of the General Capital Projects Fund, one seventy-one sub, motion by. Motion by Wilson, second by Henderson, Commissioner Wilson.
Uh, if I remember right from the budget, this was a little bit of cleanup from the projects that, uh, yeah, carryover, nothing further.
Commissioner Henderson.
Clean up.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. All right, motion carries fifteen. All right, resolution eight twenty-four zero nine, resolution making appropriations to nonprofit charitable organizations of Rome County for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-four and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Motion by Brackett, second by, uh, Henderson, Commissioner Brackett.
I think there's still a lot of work in this part right here that probably didn't get saw in the meeting that I was at. And I'd like to make a motion to send it back to the nonprofit committee and let them work this out.
So that's based off the, uh, six thousand eight hundred dollars overbooked? All right. Uh, motion to return to subcommittee. For funding, uh, second, Commissioner Henderson, you, do you have anything on the resolution?
Uh, I know we worked hard, but, but, yeah, we'll. Get it back, whatever people says.
All right, the motion is on the floor to send this back to the, uh, committee on, uh, nonprofits, uh, any discussion on it?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cunningham.
Uh, in, in regards to, if you're going to send it back, I, I do not understand the logic behind the whole thing and I've read through it and. Why certain people get certain amounts and certain groups get other amounts? And I know that's a lot to fiddle with. Wouldn't it just be simpler if you just set an amount that said this is what they get? And I know that some of those things are, are, there, there's a set amount. I know that historical society is, I know there's a set amount that, uh.
Rescue squad.
Rescue squad. Rescue squad, yes, or you know, there's a set amount, I get that. You know, and I know that there's, that there are some things that are never going to change, but rather than a thousand here and two thousand there, four thousand two hundred dollars there, five thousand, one hundred dollars there, and six thousand, eight hundred dollars there. Why don't you just say, this is the amount of the block, the grant, be that, give everybody a five thousand or whatever it is that's determined to be, and you can decide who should, should not get a grant, grant. But it just seems like a lot of going back and forth and reading what everybody put in and nobody, you know, and the lists are all dear, friends, that you all, you know, and then I'm not part of your discussions on that, but wouldn't it just be simple to say, okay, the grant is five thousand dollars this year? And this is the number we're going to give to, we're going to decide who gets it and who doesn't. Outside of the ones that get a, so, that's just my thoughts.
Thank you, ma'am.
Uh, Commissioner Hucks.
Commissioner, Chairman, yeah. I appreciate all the comments made. This was discussed in the President and Budget Committee. It passed through the Budget Committee, obviously it came out of the, uh, nonprofit committee. These are funds that are nonprofit organizations are dependent on. And we can kick this can down the road. All we want to do, the bottom line is, some of these nonprofits depend on this money to offer. So. And I don't want to score on nobody, but let's get it right. Let's get it right. We approve, uh, something and send it out. Uh, and I understand that everybody don't vote the same, the majority voted down that committee to do this. And the majority on the Budget Committee voted down the committee to do this. Now, this comes up every year. So we've got a year from the day, we've got a year from the day to start working on this, to get it right for the next budget year. And, 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 uh, I agree with Commissioner Penning. It seems to me like those that do equal or justification is pretty much the same, should be treated the same. But now going beyond that, and then some, Mr. Chairman, that's in there that don't need to be in there. That when I started on commission, that wasn't in there. But like I said, it's came out two committees, ladies and gentlemen, two committees. And you've got people depending on this money, they depend on it every year. And, uh, I'm going to vote not to send it back to the committee. Because of that reason, because of that reason, you have people that need this money. I'll yield back.
All right, thank you, sir. Commissioner Henderson.
Oh.
David, I'll put it back.
Uh, I'd like to address Charlotte. Uh, a lot of the, the nonprofits, what they do, they put in the amount of money they want. And, and some of them, they don't need no more than a thousand dollars. Some of them needs ten thousand or twenty-five, five thousand, something, whatever. So, you know, we try to accommodate what we can and we'll go back, we'll take out something, another to put with something else and, you know, so it's, it's not an easy process because you want to help everybody that's feeding somebody. You know, you want to help everybody that's doing something somebody's helping, community, you know, and so, and then we have like the rescue squad and different things that are. Automatic, you know, they're, they're getting this amount, that's what they get, that's what it's going to be. So that's when we give them more. So it's, it's nothing easy. I, I've been, been doing it for a long time and, I mean, I feel honored to get to do it, but it's, it's no easy task, it's not taking long. I just wanted to, you know, just share that not everybody's asking for a lot of money and a lot of people couldn't use five thousand when they don't need it. So that's all the project, so that's the reasons, chop them.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Chair recognizes Commissioner Wilson.
Uh, first of all, I do appreciate you being conscientious on that, but you're always good and watch out for that. Appreciate it. Uh, the reason I'll probably vote no to not to send it back is, in the grand scheme of things, on a multimillion dollar budget, we're technically, see, years ago, this was, uh, we, we said the value of a penny, we sent back a penny for nonprofit. Penny's about a hundred and fifty-two thousand, uh, right? So when we were in the budget, we were trying to be so, I mean, we were cutting here and there and trying to make everything, every little line up. And we got to a hundred and fifty thousand without cutting in much. So in the grand scheme of things, what it was cost for the committee to go back, which would be roughly around seven hundred and fifty dollars, it would be around three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars that we would be another hour and a half going over. Uh, one of the things that we had not done that we need to do in the past, because we're up to now twenty-five people of nonprofit. What started off as maybe probably five to six is now up to twenty-five. So everybody is submitting and some people, you know, it's best that we try to get the work out, if we even have one day of. I would like, I would like to see us have, you know, just a guidelines that goes, that we go by. And we incorporate that for the upcoming year for twenty twenty-five. I'd like to see us go ahead and pass this and move on because it would delay what some of them are in food services that are expecting money. Will not get that money for another thirty days. Some of them are looking for medical, it would delay them for another thirty days. In one case, I think we were feeding them for sixty days on, on one of them. So that would be the only reason, uh, that I would do that in the grand scheme of things. It would, it's a minimal amount of money, it's going to good causes and we would expedite getting this to the name in most cases, yes. That's it.
All right, the floor, the chair recognizes Commissioner Doug.
Uh, yes, hi. The, the folks that are on this committee, you did the outstanding job, I attended the committee and, um, it was, it was tough, you had to make some tough decisions. Um, the one thing that I was kind of confused about was how there were some that we were contractually obligated to give that amount of money and if we're contractually obligated, I don't see them falling into nonprofit. I'd like to see them in a regular budget as well as, I would like to see the rescue squad put in the regular budget because, um, there's, there's a lot of good causes that are here and when, after they took the ones out, they said this, this is the amount, there was only like fifty thousand dollars to disperse to the other folks. So I, I would like for us to look at that and if we can move the contractually obligated items into the, uh, a regular budget or move rescue squad. We've othered all the great causes that, that were here. They, they went over slightly, I'm, I'm fine with, with the amount that, that went up. Appreciate it, everybody started on that.
All right, uh, Commissioner Allen.
Uh, I just have a question, and maybe this would be for Mr. Henderson or Mr. Brackett. What, if this did go back to the committee, what would be the goals to be accomplished if it were to go back?
We're six thousand, seven hundred, right in there? Six thousand, eight hundred. I think if it's, if we push something through tonight, not work it out. Some people may listen, there's going to be hurt feelings, it's a knowing these guys done a great job.
Yes, absolutely.
They started forty-six thousand.
Yeah. It's almost.
I mean, they started forty-six thousand or twenty-something put together. So, uh, it was amazing job, I just feel like. Goes back, it can get worked out, but we definitely need to restructure, we need to figure out what's wrong.
The, the, the next, I was putting it back, putting it on the floor so we could debate it.
Sure.
I think we started, I think the amount, this is over three hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Something thousand, yeah. So we, we had, I felt pretty good, straightened out.
Appreciate your timing, you're the man, thank you.
All right, chair recognizes Commissioner Burd.
Yes, sir. Uh, Commissioner Hucks, you're exactly right, we try to get it right. We try to get it right. Uh, years ago, when this was started, instead of, and Mr. Doug, they did exactly the opposite of what you, they got downed. Put it over there. So it's, I think that all, I think all five have been mentioned. We, we had, we had twenty-five thousand dollar request, a lot of friends, the historical society. I know you're waiting on me to talk. I know you don't like what I'm doing, trying to look after the whole county, other than the historical society. We've given forty-two thousand dollars over the last seven years, cash to the historical society and told, I think, has all the friends, city ever given any money to, man, do you remember? Do you remember?
I'll be the sponsor of it then.
I'm saying, I'm saying the money like we're giving to Oliver Springs City. So, so when you look at, I made the motion to go over. Because if I hadn't made the motion to go over, we were going to be cutting some other stuff. We were going to be cutting. I don't know how many times we've heard in here, let's look after the, let's look after the needy. Let's look after the ones that really need this. We're not doing it. So we can pass, well, I think the other thing that we need to consider is Heritage Commission used to get thirty-five thousand dollars. Michael Dunn used to get forty-five. Heritage Commission, we're obligated to them. Now, I think the word contract came up a couple of times. Only contract we have is with, is with, uh, Hefner. Hefner has one because of, of the sixteen, sixteen counties that, again, each one pays against the population. So we are, we're not obligated to, uh, you look at, at, uh, at Mideast. Mideast, you, Mideast just get nineteen, twenty thousand dollars. Meals on Wheels, I'm sure you all have heard of that. That's all over this county. They're getting, uh, they're getting eighteen, eighteen through the same as they got. So my, my only concern is, uh, you know, we had news, we had, we had, uh, Cap, Cap got forty-two this year. You didn't get any, I think that's the only papers for your permit. So, so we got forty-two for Cap. That's all over this county. What I tried to do was I, I went by scale. I made me a scale of one to ten, see which, which, which of these agencies did the whole count. That's what we're at, trying, trying, trying to get the whole count. So we can, we can do this, that's fine. But if you look at, at the folks who are really needing food or services, so we can either talk about human services or we can talk about all other services that, that we're trying to, uh, trying to do. We may have to go back even after we do this, Heritage Commission, because we've got to have an office, we've got to pay for an office over there. And for the, uh, our campus as well.
State managed.
So that's state managed. So I don't know what that number is. That may be why they were getting it, I don't know. Know that it's all, it's, it's coming down. You know, as far as, as far as timing for them, we used to do this later in the year. We used to not do it until October or November. So that, that's not, that's not an issue with. So if you want to get it right, let's go back and look at it. If you don't, then that's fine. We'll, we'll go with what we've got. And, and as Doug said, we'll start, start now working on, but you never, you can't start that early because we didn't get everything in until June. So you don't have much time, June, you'll have to do that. But, uh, you know, I just think if you look, uh, uh, Charles Advocacy, you know, they got ten thousand dollars one year. That's the ninth judicial year. This year they got, uh, five, thirty-eight hundred, they got thirty-eight hundred. Uh, so, and, and you've got to do this. Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, thank you. We're going, we're going to wrap this up. Let me hear from Commissioner Dan, you've also got it.
Thank you, sir. So I wish I had a speech, I really do. I wish I had a speech and I could convince some other commissioners to vote on this. Man, a few words, sorry, man, made a few words, I don't like to talk. The fact that he has seen kids and it comes Christmas time, it's really hard to buy each and every one of them equal. But it, it's a huge challenge. I grew up, I understand that. Uh, but it always made mom a little bit happy when she got us a little something. And we, and we was appreciated of it. And being on the nonprofit committee, you get this feeling, I get to help somebody. And you get to help people in Rome County. You get to help the residents and you get to help people helping other people in the county. And it should be this committee that you walk away from and you feel good. I mean, really, you, you should walk out with your head high and say, I did something tonight that gave back to the residents of Rome County. The other night when I walked out, I walked out with my head down. I really did. Because sitting here as commissioners, we all sit on committees and we all have these little jobs. But this is the volunteers and it's the people that's on these nonprofits that are really making the difference in Rome County. They're not getting paid. They're not making salaries. You know, they're, they're not getting their name in the lives. Uh, and I hate to say this, but probably a lot of times, everything they do, they probably don't even get a thank you for. They don't get letters in the mail that says honor so, so, you know, they don't, they don't get the credit. So once a year, as nonprofit, and Ron Berry made this statement a few years ago, and I remember what he said. He said, this should be the best committee that gives us the best bill, but it isn't. Really isn't. Because you can't give everybody what they want. But it's the most challenging. And I understand we talk about the heritage and I don't want to create this, uh, separation between the county. Uh, the Heritage Center over here is Historical Society. It's important to, it's important to Rome County. Oliver Springs Historical Society is important to Oliver Springs. The only thing I ask you, and here's what I was going to say, and I'm going to stop because my, my chairman doesn't like me talking. But we like favoritism. That's all we like. So during the nonprofit committee, they asked for a certain amount of money. We said ten. Then it got down to eighty-five hundred. And I looked at them and I said, look, I know one thing about people in Oliver Springs. They'll battle, they'll fight for themselves and they'll try to take care of themselves. And they'll do everything they can, but they also help others. So if it helps, I'll ask them. And I asked them, I said, will you take a thousand dollars? And you know what they said? Yeah. But I tell you something that is just as remarkable. I saw something, I saw something in people that is so impressive that we don't always get to see, but sometimes we get to see it. The Rome Heritage Center stood up and said, if Oliver Springs is willing to do that, I'll give a thousand dollars off of that. You see, sometimes even though you don't see anything good out of something, there's always something good. Tonight, all I ask you is, and, and I know we're over that now, but let me say this to you, and I'll challenge every one of you. I'll come off of that committee. And anyone who just wants to step on that committee, I'll give you that seat. Because it is the hardest thing to do unless we change what we're doing. It is hard. And you will not walk away with this satisfied feeling. You'll walk away saying, I couldn't do enough. I'm sad. Because you couldn't do enough. But I asked you tonight, I asked what Ben said and what Mr. Hook said. And I appreciate you, Mr. Brackett, you're right. But I asked you tonight, I asked you to pass this, we can do it. And we need to set down, the nonprofit committee needs to come together. And we need to decide how we're going to do this. And we need to bring it to the commission. And the commission needs to vote on. Who are we going to put on? Who are we going to? Who are you going to be on that and how are we going to do it? When you start out with, with forty-something thousand dollars, almost fifty thousand dollars, and one is asking for that. I don't know how you're going to succeed. We're going to pay, accept the pay. But I asked you tonight, if you will, if we can pass it. Thank you, I'm sorry.
Let me cover something. We've had multiple speakers speak multiple times. Right now, I have a motion on the floor to send this back to the committee. Uh, we can call for questioning, we can continue debating this, but this will go on and on for a long time. So you had two, you've called.
I'll speak one time.
Commissioner Brackett, you had the original motion. So let's be, either we're going to send it back or we're going to agree to pay the additional funding for it. And, uh, before, right now, we have the motion on the table to send back. Because Junior, when you seconded, that's what you, uh, seconded.
Yeah, I put it on the floor, yes.
So it's on the floor for that. So real quick, and David, I'll close with you because you had the motion for it and request to speak. Commissioner Hooks.
Chairman, I'll be for it. I've looked at it, you have a lot to work with. We know how much tax, tax money is going into this. That's, that's the start point. We've got a dollar amount to work with. We've got these organizations that's requesting money this year. We can start working there. We already have identified some that could be pulled back. So in my way of thinking, pass it, it's going to be approved, it's going to be named in two committees. Uh, and approved with two committees, uh, you get, you get it passed and you start tomorrow. Start tomorrow. You've got all kinds of things to work with here. It's not that you don't have nothing to work with. You're working, are working for change. Don't wait for next budget.
All right, Commissioner Burden.
We can't start tomorrow, Mr. Hooks, because we don't even know what the penny's worth. So you got, got to start from there and you don't know who's going to submit. My, my point to you is, is commission's passing this tonight. So if you want to give the free medical plan, uh, twenty-nine hundred dollars. Give Oliver Springs Historical Society seventy-five hundred. And, and we have been, that's the first time anybody, I, I thought, first time anyone's ever asked somebody to pay less. Less than, you know, if it's more than five, it's been given. So this is, this is our, this is our. We can, but I just want you to be sure when somebody stops you on the street and asks you, uh, why didn't you give more to the Special Olympics than seventeen hundred dollars? Where you are, why didn't you give, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's the, we, we could have, we could have, we could have. Just remember, it's, 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 it's not the committees, it's, it's the committee. I just ask you to really consider that. Putting it on the budget committee, same, for the exact same reason as tonight. You, you had the, the warning parts, you got fourteen hundred dollars. They were here, the day they were here, we, we were going to do whatever we could to help. We're going to give fourteen hundred dollars. So that's, if that's what we're having, United Way, you gave seventeen hundred dollars. That's every, every, every place that counts. So it's not how much we're giving them, it's who's getting, who's getting the bulk of the money. That's easy to see, we got the bulk of the money. And if that's going to help all of us in Rome County, then fine. Just remember, that's, that's what we're voting for tonight.
Commissioner Ross.
Mr. Chairman. We're going to talk about, you know, where it's going, what it's going forward. One organization up here, the Rescue Squad, we ended up giving them two hundred dollars. We won't talk about an organization that, yes, they get operations in county. See, they're an emergency service that's in operation. We decided we just going to give them two hundred dollars. Yeah, the two hundred. But, you know, being, you know, worried about commissions and, you know, and everybody here needing that. We need to think about, you know, as we said, saying exactly where the dollars are going and make sure that they're going to most where they count. All of them are counted. But, you know, if you're going to give, they're an emergency service, I'm going to back, I always go back to emergency service, it's like long. That's, that's, that's just my part.
All right, we'll close with, uh, Mr. Brackett in the first request.
Like I said, I was at the meeting, that's a tough job. I mean, you're behind the eight ball where you ever start. Definitely, we need to do better with it. We need to change something, whatever we have to do to help as many or more people as we can. I mentioned some opioid money, maybe. If it, a lot of this ties into maybe drugs and alcohol, maybe we take some of that, figure out a way to help out. Forty-six thousand dollars, a little bit over there, it's not a lot of money. Twenty-five, twenty-three, you have your big money, but, uh, I, I don't know what, how long it would take. I guess if we could went back to the committee to get this done or done or what, but, uh, again, we're in a predicament where we're spending more money than what we've talked about. That's the reason I made the motion is, you know, if you, if you're going to talk about it, then you need to be behind what, what my thinking is. And I think it can be worked out. It's just a matter of, we want to swallow our pride and work it out. Not saying you done a bad job. Get to that number, we have to do it, so.
All right, any other debate on the nonprofit? So right now, the motion on the floor is to send back to the subcommittee. It's six thousand eight hundred dollars. Any others go. Hearing none, seeing none, matter of course. If you vote yes, you vote yes to send it back. If you vote no, we'll table it here next up and vote it out again. All right, it failed, so here's what we're going to do. Looking at that, we're going to, we're going to reintroduce this motion. It's hard not to say no because when you look at that bottom line on there, you, uh, see, uh, nine million, five hundred and ninety-six thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars is signed. Here we're arguing over six thousand eight hundred to meet all those. I would challenge you on next year, let's look at the ones that are in it. Look at the ones that you, you, what was the word used that were obligated or that are actually, uh, I would love to see the contract where we are contractually. Say, if there is such a contract saying that I have to give, uh, X thousands of dollars to this organization or entity, I would love to see that.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say a couple of things I think can give us some clarity moving forward here. First of all, uh, we have to represent this, perhaps whoever's watching, meeting or texting me right now. Excited to talk to me about what that contractual obligation is tomorrow. So I'll get some more clarity on that at ten-thirty.
Yeah, it's just more, but I'd love to see.
I want to examine it. And so another example would be the, the rescue squad. There's no contractual obligation with the Heritage Commission. However, uh, all counties are mandated by state Tennessee to have a historian and archivist. Uh, so there are things that we can establish that we could potentially pull out of nonprofit realm. And then I think there's also, uh, things that we can do that would keep this from being an apples to oranges comparison as we go down the list. And provide some, some basic parameters on what to consider. Uh, there's a lot that's been, uh, suggested here now, which are great ideas. So what I would suggest is I'm going to create a proposal to go back, reconvene, ask Chairman Barry to, uh, have the, whether y'all pass this or not tonight. To have another nonprofit committee to, to establish what parameters are going to be.
Yes.
For next year and bring that back to commission for approval.
Yes, I would, I would love to see that and I'd love to see any contracts we've got pending with said agencies. There's twenty-five out there, I'd like to see the ones that we're saying that were contractual, uh, obligated to.
I think in some cases, it's more historical standards than it is contracts. But we'll have that information for that committee.
I'm going to fire a hot flash, but I try. All right, listen, and as I said, we're arguing over six thousand eight hundred dollars when there's nine million, uh, five hundred and ninety-six fourteen in there in the bottom line. All right, at this time, resolution zero eight twenty-four zero nine, making appropriations to nonprofit charitable organizations of county, uh, Rome County for the fiscal year beginning July first, uh, twenty twenty-four and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Motion by Dove, second by Hooks, Commissioner Dove.
I think a duck has been said.
Commissioner Hooks.
That's smooth, boys.
Any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, seeing none, matter of course. And a lot of times you just have to go behind the horrible. Eleven, yes, uh, four, no. All right. Moving forward. Resolution eight twenty-four, uh, ten, resolution concerning parking at eight fifty-one Canyon Bridge Road, Hermant, Tennessee. Have a motion by Henderson, the second by Kirby, Mr. Henderson. Mr. Kirby, no. Any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, seeing none, matter of course. Country boy, you think you can hit that button? Attorney, carry fifteen. Eleven's was pulled. Eight twenty-four eleven was pulled at last minute, so if we could go to twelve. Sorry, Mr. Williams. All right, uh, resolution. All right. Uh, Resolution eight, twenty-four, twelve, resolution to approve, uh, the tax policy for the cure at the courthouse walls. Yeah, I need a motion to second. Hooks' motion, how about a second? Seconded by Charlotte. Any discussion, any debates?
None.
All right. Hearing none, seeing none. Motion, carries fifteen. All right. Resolution eight, twenty-four, thirteen, resolution displacing surplus, search Rome County vehicles listed on the attached sheet, uh, dated July thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, entitled surplus vehicles. Motion by Commissioner Henderson, the second by Commissioner Kirby. Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, yeah, there's something needed if you're.
All right. Commissioner Kirby. Any discussion, any debate?
Mr. Chair, just, just one thing. We, we didn't take this to the property committee again, because it's a small number. We need to take them all to the property committee if we can, but I didn't think it's worth the money for the, for the many, many, the dispense of these many.
All right. And, uh, is that, is, is that the will of the commission? Fine with that. Uh, I assure you, uh, those vehicles are used and, uh, not abused, but they're used and are ready for use. All right. Any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, seeing none. Motion carries fifteen. Is there any other business coming from the Rome County Commission tonight? Hearing none, seeing none. Motion to adjourn. I have a second. All of the people say aye.